Everyone to Cupertino City Council's special meeting. Today is September 6, 2023. If you're able, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please have a seat. Madam Speaker, roll call, please.
Councilmember Chow.
Here.
Councilmember Fruin.
Here.
Councilmember Moore.
Here.
Vice Mayor Mohan.
Here.
Mayor Way.
Here. There is no closed session, so we are going to a very brief ceremonial item. The city of Cupertino is pleased to present a proclamation in honor of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. This is a time to raise awareness to help shift public reception and reduce stigma around mental health. According to the U.S. Surgeon General Dr. Vivek Murphy, "Mental health has become the defining public health and societal challenge of our time." We continue to see a rise in rates of suicide here in the United States, and on behalf of the city of Cupertino, we are grateful for your advocacy and the work you do every day to improve and save precious lives of so many people struggling with mental health challenges. We must normalize supporting mental health just as we do physical health, and we call all leaders to speak about this evenly, openly, and honestly. We all have a responsibility to our community. Thank you again for all the work you do. Now we're moving to... Yep, you can clap. Thank you. Thank you. Now we're moving to post-appointment and orders of the day. Do we have any post-appointments?
No, Mayor Way.
Orders of the day, we're okay? Okay, so let's move on. We'll move on to 6.5, oral communications. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda for discussion, including information items. Madam Speaker, how many cards do we have?
Yes, Mayor, I have 16 speaker cards totaling 48 minutes.
Okay, and then...
Do you wish to make an adjustment to the time?
No, I think it's okay. How about online? On Zoom, do we have any?
On Zoom, we have no hands raised.
Okay, so let's start oral communication. Thank you.
Okay, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Brooke Ezit, followed by Jacob Sterling Silver. Welcome, Jennifer.
Welcome back, everybody. It's good to see you all now that we're starting up September in the fall. I just wanted to bring up a couple of items that had... I had gone through, which I just wanted to share. One of them is SB 423, which you all did discuss, which I'm glad. It actually, we thought that it was going to the Assembly floor this morning, but it was not voted on. I believe it will be taken up later. This bill has been amended severely. I don't know if it's enough to deactivate the damage to the Coastal Commission, but we are hopeful that maybe Senator Weiner will just release the Coastal Commission part and let it go. I'm very, very concerned particularly with what happened in Lahaina. I spent my honeymoon in Lahaina one month after 9/11, and my grandfather served on the Arizona in the 1920s, and I was standing at the memorial of the Arizona on October 11th of 2001. I want to make sure that we don't... The lessons that Lahaina is telling us, we need to understand. This could be anywhere on the California coast. I have now two sets of household members that live in the coastal conservancy area in Aptos in Santa Cruz. This bill terrifies me. I think that they need to make sure if they're going to talk about deactivating the Coastal Commission, they should put it in a separate bill. My parents worked very hard in the 1970s to help establish the coastal conservancy. It was a statewide vote. I wasn't old enough to vote on it, but I know that they voted for it. I don't appreciate having my parents' time and effort and money go to waste by having someone try to take down a statewide initiative that was put in in 1976 by the people of California. Therefore, SB 423 is a hazard and a nuisance to the state of California. I hope that it does not get out of the Assembly. The best place for this bill is on the suspend. Also, I have attended two Fremont Unified High School District meetings about the trustee. I guess they're trying to establish some sort of a trustee voting area. There was no representation from Cupertino, Los Altos, or Saratoga at either of the meetings, and I really feel like the trustee board is being bulldozed by the city of Sunnyvale with the Moffett Park, 20,000 homes...
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time.
...causing a problem. Thank you.
And just a reminder, if you wish to speak under oral communications, please have a speaker card submitted in the next six minutes or your hand raised on Zoom. So next we have Ed Hirschfield, followed by Alex Wyckoff, followed by Rodney Weathers. Welcome, Ed.
Thank you. Does this thing work?
Yes, we can hear you.
No, I'm talking about...
Yes, just put it... Place it down.
Okay. I've lived in my home in Cupertino for 61 years, and I have watched the population of wires on the telephone pole in my backyard grow and grow and grow, and I think they've grown beyond the capacity of the pole to hold them. I think that the transmission systems in Cupertino for the areas where there are not buried transmission lines represent a hazard, and Lahaina is one example of that kind of hazard. I also see that AT&amp;T is burying their wires in the forests, and I'm recommending that Cupertino initiate a study to determine the feasibility of burying the wires within Cupertino. My situation is I live in the Fair Grove neighborhood. We have a wooden transmission pole that was installed over 70 years ago. The pole is at the corner of my property and holds up the high voltage transmission lines, a transformer to convert the voltage to 220...
You want to speak a little bit closer to the microphone?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. AT&amp;T telephone wires, the plain old telephone, AT&amp;T Internet Distribution cables, AT&amp;T fiber optic cables, AT&amp;T fiber optic breakout boxes, and Xfinity distribution cables and breakout boxes. I've experienced power outage of more than 20 hours each year due to foliage interference with the lines, and I think it's dangerous because it could cause a fire or electrocute when the lines go down. The pole with all the associated wires and boxes looks terrible. I was an engineering manager for many years, and if a technician working for me had dressed the wires in the way in which they're dressed on my pole, he wouldn't have lasted more than a Cupertino hour, so he would have been fired. And I think that's the case with all the wires in Cupertino. Cupertino does not regulate the users of the poles, to the best of my knowledge, and there is no rule governing the quality of the work they do. The work they do is terrible. It's only put up there to work. It's not put up there to be safe and to survive. So I'm also recommending that Cupertino assign...
Thank you. That is your time.
I'm also recommending that Cupertino...
You're muted, sir. That is your time. You've been muted. Please observe the set speaker times. Thank you. Next, we have... I actually skipped over Brooke Ezit, followed by Jacob Sterling Silver. Brooke Ezit, followed by Jacob Sterling Silver, followed by Alex Wyckoff. Welcome, Brooke.
Thank you, Kristin. I would like the city council to reconsider its tactics, or at least the majority of the city council to reconsider its tactics. If I wasn't aware that Louis Carroll and George Orwell were deceased, I would think that they were your public policy advisers, because there's an absolute disconnect between your rhetoric and your actions. You talk about transparency, and yet at every turn, you try to silence the public and put impediments in place to keep people from accessing information. You talk about kumbaya and let's all get along, and yet the May 9th meeting was a perfect example of what you shouldn't be doing. I realize that public service is difficult, but you need to have a thick skin. If you want to be venerated and if you don't want to be Christianed, you need to go off and start a religious cult, because then you can boot people up when they disagree with you.
Thank you, Brooke. Next, we have Jacob Sterling Silver, followed by Alex Wyckoff.
Hi, everyone. My name is Jacob Sterling Silver. I have a goodwill thing to try to bring up. It's actually, I didn't know it was Suicide Prevention Month, but I work with a nonprofit with a couple of combat vets, and we try to deal with just that. The veteran suicide isolation is a bad thing. The numbers, you know, they fluctuate. They say it's 17 to 22 a day. Actually, some new studies are starting to show that they're not counting drug overdose or alcohol-related deaths, which is kind of sad. If a guy overdoses with a suicide note, then that's considered a suicide. If there's no note, that's considered an accidental death, so that number could be as close to double. From some of the research I've done, I don't know how accurate it is. So what we've been doing is just trying to get in between the isolation and the veteran. I had a friend that was kind of going through it. He was a little bit depressed. I said, "Get in the truck. We're going skydiving." And he wasn't depressed when he hit the ground, so we're trying something different, trying to change tactics. I think sending them towards therapy all the time, it starts to burn them out. I call it doctor burnout, and I believe they get bored through some of the treatment, especially the combat vets. So we try to do anything we can to get them out of the house, and we've also been engaged with some other county activities. We were at the Veterans Stand Down handing out 300 pounds of free ribs. It was a good time, but some of the vets just can't deal with big events, so we're trying to give them very, very intense peer support, you know? Go out to the range. I took a Marine out to the range. I hadn't been there in five years, and he was talking about two deployments in his head, always having a bunch of chatter in his mind, but when he went out there and shot some clay targets, he had a great time. He said all that shut down. So trying to get them to do something that excites them and have some fun. Hopefully, we can get them living life again. A lot of those guys were heavy, heavy adrenaline lifestyle, and we take them back and you throw them into the VA system, and all they have is therapists and doctors that are digging up old memories they've been trying to drink away for years. It's a little rough for them. So I volunteered down at that VA for, it was about six, seven years, and I dealt with guys dealing with addiction issues and tried to help them through that path, and they're just bored. We got to do something different. We got to change tactics. So we're going around asking for help from all the cities. I'll go to San Francisco, down to as far south as my truck will take me, to every city council and see if we can find some support. You guys have my information. We're trying to get into local papers, just to let everybody know we're here, and if there's anybody that wants to help out with the actual Board of Directors, I'm willing to talk to people. I'm just a union iron worker. I put these buildings up. I'm not a businessman. I just know we got to do something else, because it's just, there's too many of them dying, and it doesn't just affect that individual. It affects generations after. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. Next, we have Alex Wyckoff, followed by Rodney Weathers, followed by Michael Moore. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you, Kristin. Good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name's Alex Wyckoff, and I'm an environmental program specialist in the Public Works Department and have worked for the city for 29 years. I am also the CEA Local 21 Vice Chair. Fair and reasonable wages is why our CEA and OE3 brothers and sisters are here before you tonight. We stand united. The current state of our negotiation has stalled, and the current offer for management over two years combined is less than half of CPI, and healthcare premiums have an unprecedented increase beginning in January of 2024. We understand the financial constraints that the city is navigating. However, keeping the city moving forward with excellence in recreational programs, capital projects, and meeting the daily customer needs, both in office and with ongoing and ever-increasing maintenance demands in our parks, streets, and city facilities. Underfunding member wages cuts deeply into the ability to retain existing employees and recruit new talent. A revolving door of staff causes significant uncertainty when building an organization's succession plan. A failed succession plan with staff who are not fully committed to the city's mission and one another is detrimental to being able to deliver the service this community expects. Institutional knowledge is lost and very difficult to develop. One-time payouts do not retain staff. If the base wage cannot compete with similar positions in other cities, that one-time payout money is not reinvested back into the community as staff receive it and leave for higher-paying wages elsewhere. It is to the city's benefit to raise employee wages commensurate with our neighboring communities. CPI is a floor for our contract and is fair and reasonable. We ask you think about the many successful community festivals and programs offered each year. To give your attention to the well-manicured roadway medians in all of our parkland, to remember in a winter of epic weather where we had little to no roadway flooding and minimal tree loss, to the significant and ever-increasing number of building and development projects reviewed and inspected, and to making sure we pay our bills on time. There is so much more. Our members are the engine driving the machine to not only have those programs but to do them with excellence. Fair and reasonable wages are what we expect. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I would politely ask to refrain from clapping. Thank you.
Next, we have Rodney Weathers, followed by Michael Moore, followed by Roberto Montes. Welcome, Rodney.
Thank you, Council. Good evening. I'm Rodney Weathers. I'm one of the city of Cupertino's building inspectors, and my wife told me to get a haircut because she said there's nothing worse than a hippie begging for a raise. So anyway, first, I believe we are all intelligent, caring people, and that we can resolve this situation to the benefit of everyone. This is a code book, one of many that we use to ensure and use for code preservation for life and safety. This is our job. We all know that there won't be any substantial raises for the good work that has already been done this year by those actually bringing in income to the city. We all know that it's not because they slacked in their work or didn't show up. We all know that there was a mistake that was made that had nothing to do with the workers. As a city of Cupertino staff, we all are asking for... All we are asking for is a cost-of-living raise. This was earned over the past year. The cost already is gone. If they do not receive the cost-of-living raise, they actually are resulting in a pay cut. Coming from a business owner, it doesn't seem logical to cut off the hand that feeds you. Yes, there is a deficit, and the most logical, intelligent thing you can do if you have a deficit is to create more income, and there are ways to do that. When you devalue your employees by not giving them a raise, and especially not giving them a cost-of-living raise, you're actually cutting their wages. What commitment should they have to you? We have already lost many great employees during the last few months, and as we all know, there is a double cost to having to hire and train new employees. I believe it's important that we look at the cause and effect. The employees did not cause the issue or the problem, so it doesn't seem appropriate or logical to punish them. They have already earned their cost-of-living raise, and it is important that they receive it. They will continue to do the good work that they do. They will continue to be more loyal, and they will also offer solutions that will create more income to the city. If they do not receive their cost-of-living increase and feel undervalued and hit hard financially, they will either leave or continue to seek other employment over time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Michael Moore, followed by Roberto Montes, followed by Alex Corbalis. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. Thank you for having me. Ladies and gentlemen of the dais, thank you for your presence. Greatly appreciate that. My name is Michael Moore. I'm the business representative for Operating Engineers Local Number Three. I have to say this: Everybody can be great because everybody can serve. The men and women behind me serve this city with a lot of reverency and zeal to ensure that the residents have everything that they need to make this city productive, fun, and great to live in, and for that, I'm actually grateful. There was a quote by this great gentleman who was assassinated many, many years ago, and his quote was, "Life's most persistent and urgent question is, what are you doing for others?" So I posed that to this dais. What are you doing for others? And those others are the men and women that are standing behind me. We would love it if you would take us into consideration in everything that you do. Keep us in mind for the things that we do for you and the residents of the city. With that, I bid you adieu. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Next, we have Roberto Montes, followed by Alex Corbalis, followed by Kendra Williams. Welcome, Roberto.
Hi. So my name is Roberto. I work in the Operators and Engineers Union, and I just wanted to come up to you guys and speak more on how the lack of wages that we're receiving in this next contract affects us. I know they already spoke to it a little bit about how without a decent wages here, we will be taking pay cuts and how that would affect me personally. I'm part of the... I live in the city's BMR program. That's the below-market housing program, and I'm lucky enough to be in that program. But even programs like that raise your rent by at least 8.5% to 9% a year. So luckily, what we've been getting from the union over the years has been able to cover that. When in a year like this, when they're only offering 1.7% or whatever it is, I don't have enough to even cover my next rent increase, along with all the other stuff that's coming along in January with Kaiser going up. It's going up 11.7% for me and my family, which, you know, is, in my current situation, is mandated by Santa Clara County that I have to have, you know, Kaiser or whatever it is, a type of health insurance. So I'm just posing it out there to you guys that with all these increases, I don't know how you expect us to come in and do the work, because obviously, we're losing out on money every time. So that's obviously piling up debt. It doesn't really, you know, bode out well for us, and that's me who lives in the city. I could only imagine some of these other guys that are commuting from super far away that have more, bigger families that they have to feed, and it's just not sustainable for us. So it's just something that needs to be addressed to keep everybody here happy. Everybody here does a really great job, and it's just sad that we're in the situation that we have to come up here and tell you guys about this when we get nothing but kudos and good jobs from everybody around the city. Everybody loves the work that we do, and it's just a bad situation. It feels like to me, at least, that we have to come, it seems like, beg for money when we've done the work. But yeah, that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, Roberto. Next, we have Alex Corbalis, followed by Kendra Williams, followed by John Martir. Welcome, Alex.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. My name is Alex Corbalis. I am the president of the Cupertino Employee Association, and I'm here to speak to you about the same thing that you've just heard a number of people speak to you about pretty eloquently and who you will hear quite a number more speak about, I'm sure equally as eloquently. We are here because we are in need of a real cost-of-living adjustment. I assume that all of you are proud to serve this city. You wouldn't be on council and spending this amount of time working with this city if you weren't, and I cannot even express to you how proud the people standing behind me are also to work for this city and the amount of time and effort we dedicate into making this place something that we can be proud of. When you look around at the services that the city provides, that's part of why you're proud to serve here. If you have an elderly neighbor that maybe is a little lonely and needs someplace to go, that's our senior center as part of our recreation department. Maybe your niece is learning to play basketball. Well, that's me. Those are programs that I run. Maybe that park that your niece is playing basketball in might be maintained by Roberto that you just heard speak, and many, many more things. If a new coffee shop opens down the street from your house, that's another city employee that has done work to make that happen. If you and your daughter ride your bikes to take her to school, that Safe Routes to School program, the reason that you have a safe way to get to that school with your child is because of a city employee, and those streets that you took to get there, not just the route, the streets themselves and the bike lanes are well-maintained, again because even more city employees have worked to make that happen. And Roberto said it, we are always happy to do it, and we do now and then get praise for that, and we appreciate it when we do, but as trite as it sounds, you can't pay the bills with praise. Rent increases, he mentioned 11. some odd percent that Kaiser is going up just this year. Since the last time that the city's contribution to employee health has gone up, it's actually almost 20% that just Kaiser has gone up. And I bring up Kaiser because it's a pretty good, you know, kind of baseline to talk about health insurance from, and many people have it. We are just in need of more than is currently on the table, and we respectfully request that you meet that need. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Next, we have Kendra Middleton-Williams, followed by John Martir, followed by Sean Philbeck.
Begin.
Welcome, Kendra.
Yes. Thank you. My husband works for the city of Cupertino, proudly so for the last 15, 16 years now. I want to begin today by thanking everyone for being here and taking the time to hear us out. It's pretty important for any city or municipality to have the actual workers who are there doing the doing that it takes to beautify and keep up a city and every single detail within it. You know what makes people want to live there, those small things. It's important to have these blue-collar workers that take care of everything, that make everything and every little detail run, such as traffic lights, keeping that median grassy and green, trees trimmed, and all the flowers planted. In my 15-year memory, the insurance offered by this city has been, forgive my exaggeration or overstating, but it has been ridiculously expensive, and it is now crippling expensive. We've reached the limit and a point where nearly every service is out of reach because the physicians and their groups have canceled affiliates with our insurance, and the limitations we pay for those and the most expensive insurance have basically become unattainable and unusable. Could the city manager please make themselves known? Because I looked up the public accessible salaries today and earning approximately four times what my husband earns, it seems that the city can somehow work it out that our employees are making a more commensurate salary to afford the insurances, afford cost of housing, and everything that's happening going on with rent increases, housing increases, property tax increases, and all of the things that accompany a spike in the economy that we're seeing. We can't expect municipal employees to go on at the point we've been going on, doing the jobs that they're doing every single day and maintain normal life. Asking them to commute an hour, hour and a half is untenable with the cost of gas and the cost of housing, even on the outskirts of the Bay Area. These employees that are all standing behind me take pride in what they do. It's why companies such as Apple have been here for three-plus decades. Now, things that are happening in terms of taxes and whatnot, they happen, and it is on the people sitting before me to work those things out and make it suborn as best they can within reason. It shouldn't be a punishment. It's not why people pay $2.5 to $5 million to own a three-bed, two-bath house here and have the school systems and the beautiful city that they want to live in. So with that said, I just want to remind everyone that at some point, these municipal employees are going to get to a point where they're having to pay a courtesy-of-working-for-us tax, and the last time I looked, that was called slavery, and you can't expect your employees to go further, working at these wages and these rates, paying the insurance costs that they're paying. And... and expect them to go on. It's not sustainable and we have to do better. Collectively, we have to do better. Thank you.
Thank you, Kendra. Next we have John Martir, followed by, it's either Seem or Sean Philbeck. Sean, okay. Followed by Peggy Griffin. Thank you. Welcome, John.
Thanks, Kirsten. John Martir, City of Cupertino, proud employee of nine and a half years with the Community Development Department. I've been a senior planner, start off, assistant planner, worked my way up. Love this community. Grew up here in the West Valley, 46 years now. And a lot of what I have to say has, has already been said, so I'll keep it pretty short and sweet. My brothers and sisters behind me, who have been brothers and sisters to me since I've been working here, and especially since 2016, when I joined the CEA board and I've continued to be on this board since then because I feel it's very important to advocate for these folks because I care about them. We care about each other. You know, these, these folks, they serve the community, especially as residents, with, with the best of their abilities. However, as you've heard, with the rising health costs as well as inflation, other price increases, many of us would prefer us to move on, not necessarily from our homes, but at least to other jobs. Many of us have decades of experience, as you heard from Alex Wykoff, my, my colleague on, on the board. Experience that if lost, costs the community more financially than it would just to reinvest, just to reinvest just a little bit in the workforce that you already have. All we ask for you guys is to work with us in a manner that's responsive, that's fair, and that's respectful. Again, thank you for listening and your patience with us. And we look forward to continue our wonderful relation that we've had so far through the decades that we've served this community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next we have Sean Philbeck, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Stanley Young. Welcome, Sean.
Thank you. So first I wanted to start off by saying thank you to the, the city council for allowing us all to speak here tonight. As she stated, my name is Sean, Sean Philbeck. I am here tonight in solidarity with my brothers and sisters with OE3 and Local 21. This group here tonight represents the backbone of this city. We are the group who keeps this city safe during the pandemic of COVID-19, which we would all rather forget, but it's in the past. And we are also the group that responded diligently and efficiently during the storms earlier this year. And we were also able to help out with numerous events in the city as well as keeping this city beautiful, safe, and clean. The reason that all of this is possible is this group's hard work, our diligent training, and our overwhelming dedication. Mayor Way, I don't know if you remember, but you came to the city and gave us a proclamation for our efforts during that storm. And one of the statements you had made was that you were so proud that the city of Cupertino did not have to declare a state of emergency. That was a very busy day for us and I'll be upfront with you about that, that we just jumped into action. It wasn't like there was any planning. It's not like we live in Florida and we know a hurricane's coming, so get ready. We just went and we got out and we did it. We always go above and beyond for the city of Cupertino and its citizens, and we will always continue to do that. I'm going to leave you with a couple of thoughts. One, many of my coworkers have spoke about the rise in medical increase. And I can't fathom, and I hope any of you could fathom, what it would be like to not be able to afford the medical increase. Also, there are a few employees here that do this job and they actually go to another job as well. So they do this job from say six to three and go to another job by probably four, four-thirty. And if not the same job, pretty close to it, and they're working long hours. And I ask you this, that we were there for your, you in your time of need. And we ask that the favor be returned to us, that you be there for in our time of need. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Sean. Next we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Stanley Young, followed by Joshua Rodriguez. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, council and staff. This is the first opportunity the public has had to address what happened at the last regular city council meeting on July 18th regarding item 13 SB 403. It was a packed agenda and the chambers were packed. Kirsten, our city clerk, announced there were 98 in-house speakers and for this agenda item and 48 on Zoom for a total of 146 speakers. First, Mayor Way said the normal allotted time was one hour for an agenda item, but she was going to extend it to 90 minutes with each person allowed to speak one minute. Typically, when there are a lot of speakers, everyone speaks, but they have a reduced amount of time. Everyone speaks because every voice matters. Second, I believe Mayor Way was mistaken when she said there was normally an hour limit for public comment for agenda items. Nowhere in the agenda or the city council procedure manual or in our municipal code does it limit the total amount of time for any given agenda item to one hour. Typically, it is adjusted on an as-needed basis. You can't assign an arbitrary time limit, nor should you. I believe she was confused, confusing agenda items with oral communications. Third, Mayor Way allowed the same person, then Mosey from Equality Labs, to speak twice when an enormous number of people were not allowed to even given the opportunity to speak once. Why should someone who potentially will make money from the passage of this bill be allowed to speak twice when the large number of community members were denied the opportunity to speak at all? Once someone speaks, they should not be allowed to speak again. Fourth, there was a disruptive behavior by a high-level city staff member that it was allowed to continue, but the same disruptive behavior from the public was not. The disruption was so loud that it was difficult for the public and the council members to hear what was being said, which was the intent of their action. Yet Mayor Way did nothing to stop it. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next we have Stanley Young, followed by Joshua Rodriguez, followed by Jen Bromley. Welcome, Stanley.
Hello. I'd like to wish everybody a happy belated Labor Day and to remember what Labor Day is about. And it's about these working men and women who serve the community. And I'm thank, I'm glad they're here tonight and I could not say anything better than what's already been said. I'm really proud of these men and women who serve this city and I thank you for your time. So that was ad libbed. I'm going to get into my speech now. So good evening, honorable mayor and council members. My name is Stanley Young with IFPTE Local 21 and I'm speaking on behalf of the city employees who I represent in Cupertino. We know that the city of Cupertino has budget and financial challenges. But we have to get creative to make sure that our members, who provide the excellent services to the community and residents of Cupertino, maintain their fair wage increases and salaries. What is currently being offered is not enough to keep up with the Bay Area of cost of living and local inflation. We have also seen the cost of healthcare has continued to increase, creating a burden on family, healthcare, and individual plans. You've heard it here tonight, anywhere from 10 to 20% in the past three or four years. It's unacceptable that families have to choose between holiday gifts, healthcare, and other personal needs for their family. Therefore, I ask you to explore new options to make sure that the city can retain the staff who have served the public, but also make sure we can recruit new employees as well. This is vital to make sure that there are employees who can continue to provide the services that the public and community and Cupertino count on and depend on. Our union saw what happened in San Jose, 800 to 1,000 vacancies in a place where it cost $800,000 or $200 million to build a home. We cannot let that happen in Cupertino. We have to make sure our members can afford to work for the city. Our union wants the city council and city leadership to put city employees and the residents of Cupertino first. They are one and the same and we don't seek division within the community. Actually, we need the community's support because our members are the people that provide those services. You heard Alex Corbalis talking about safe ways to school, basketball programs, senior center programs, community centers. That's our members who do their work for the citizens of this city. Think of all the city events, the parks, the community centers, the special events and memories that families have created here. The people who staff those are our members. Please invest in the city employees and residents by making sure our members have fair wage increases to continue to serve the public of Cupertino. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Stanley. Next we have Joshua Rodriguez, followed by Jen Bromley, followed by Lisa Warren. Welcome, Joshua.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Joshua Rodriguez and I'm the political director for the South Bay Labor Council, representing over 100 unions in Santa Clara and San Benito counties. I wanted to speak up on behalf of the city employees that are here tonight and just say that the offer and the deal as it stands is, is not a serious deal. It's insulting and it's disrespectful. A 1.75% increase doesn't even keep up with the cost of living. It doesn't address any housing. It doesn't address the rate, the race in healthcare prices. This already, this is one of the most expensive counties to live in, in the U.S. And it was way before inflation started shooting up in the past two years. And an increase of 1.75% is just not serious. The city employees will serve better. It's these workers that keep the city going and it's the workers that deal with taxpayers day to day and interact with all the citizens and provide the services that make this city what it is. I think city, city leadership needs to invest in their workers so we can have a functioning, thriving city. And it's time to get serious and come to a table with a proposal that addresses the reality that these workers are living in, which you've heard of tonight. And they should get what they deserve. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Josh. And I think this says Jen Bromley.
Jerry Bromley.
Jerry.
ATU Local 265. I'm here to support my union brothers and sisters. And as you've heard today here, they're trying to get a fair contract to be able to take care of their families. And healthcare, as we all know, is, is nothing to not take care of. And I feel that with, with all the skyrocketing of living and benefits that these people and these workers have done for your city, I live here in Cupertino. I moved here about two years ago and it's one of the most beautiful places I've lived. And definitely has a lot of services that a lot of other communities don't have. I lived in different Bay Areas, towns of the Bay Area. I grew up in Morgan Hill. I've worked for VTA 38 years, so I know the whole, all the cities and communities. And what these people are doing here, keeping your city safe, clean, and all your services that you have are way more than a lot of other cities. And you should pay them what they're worth. You should give them a fair living wage increase. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry. Next we have Lisa Warren, followed by Rhoda Frye. And then we will move to Zoom. Welcome, Lisa.
Hi, thank you. So based on what I've been hearing from these people that are asking very politely for something they believe they deserve, and I hope you're listening, I'm, I'm changing actually what I was going to say in this section of the meeting. I do hope you're hearing, over and over, I'm hearing that these people are feeling and there's sort of an excuse being used about the financial issues not yet solved for the city. I just hope that each and every one of you and everyone listening remember that a $100 million city hall is not at all a value to this city if we can't employ the people we need to make it work. So please don't forget, there's reasons that mass, that money is not being spent or you're not willing to spend it. Remember that every step of the way on every decision you make. Thank you. I also have a question. I, I remember that in July, I think it was July 6th, there was a closed session meeting that was supposed to include the performance reviews of both the city manager and the city attorney. And I know that that did not happen that evening. It was, those reviews were postponed and I'm just, would like to know when they're going to be rescheduled. I'm assuming that a contract with these positions, there's probably some dates that you have to, milestones where you have to do these reviews. And I just want to make sure that has been rescheduled because there's been no mention of it since. So it'd be helpful if you could somehow answer that. And I'll save the rest. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. And our final speaker in community hall will be Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening, council members. I have a number of disjointed thoughts this evening. Nice to see so many staff here for the most part. I found highly skilled staff to be patient and eager to help, most recently with code enforcement. Yes, there are some bad apples, but good apples are not. They deserve closure and negotiations. And I would echo Lisa's comment regarding why, how can we have a new city hall? Got money, if we think we've got money for that, then we should have money to pay people. Anyway, I wanted to continue with some disjointed thoughts regarding Lehigh. You have probably heard some reports that have stated that Lehigh has committed to cease manufacturing cement. This is untrue. Lehigh has in fact vehemently protected their conditional use permit to manufacture cement. It is only clinker production that has permanently ceased. Clinker can be imported, other materials can be imported to make cement. So Lehigh is continuing to protect its conditional use permit to manufacture cement. I also hope that the city staff and council can look at the new reclamation plan because it does not bode well for the residents of Cupertino regarding air pollution, traffic, our scenic, protected scenic views, et cetera. Onto my other thoughts regarding Valco. Per a letter from the Department of Environmental Health, it appears that Valco intends to change its plans. And the Department of Environmental Health was not, did not feel that those were consistent with the cleanup efforts. And it would be really nice to see these plans revealed to the city and to the public. Speaking about revealing things, just wanted to talk a little bit about transparency, something that our council members and people who want to become council members talk about a lot. We want transparency. Why is the park and rec meeting no longer videoed? And what is the cost to video the parks and rec meeting and who made the decision? Last of all, some folks have referred to this, this evening. A gentleman who testified here in our own city hall passed away shortly thereafter on our grounds. And I'm just devastated that our mayor has not volunteered to have, or vice mayor, because I know you've done monos silence for our citizen. We have had moments of silence for the people and not him, and it's wrong. And especially that he was admonished just before he died in front of his child is unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And next we will move to Zoom. We have two hands raised from San R and Gori Chala. Welcome, San. And San, you'll need to unmute yourself. There you go.
Yes, thank you for the opportunity. Our staff do on a daily basis. I want to specifically speak for the lowest levels of staff that the time in management costs. I want to draw the city council attention to the fact that we're dealing with some budget that has to be claimed in order to fund the requests.
San, I want to interrupt you. You're cutting out, so we, your audio is very broken.
Now?
You can try and keep speaking.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so I just want to call out the fact that money has to be found somewhere else to fund the needs of our city staff, which is a very important priority. And I want to call to your attention that we spend on non-essential funding to programs such as I Love Cupertino website, such as Chamber of Commerce funding, such as new websites for online shopping and subsidizing festivals. I'd like to call your attention to half of our spend on parks and rec or half of our spend on sidewalks is actually bicycle program. It is time to cut these non-essential spend activity and fund our staff. It is time to keep the lights on and it is time to cut all non-essential spend on activities such as a $100 million city hall. At a time when you need to be focusing on our finances, you spend all your time on our ethics policies and unnecessary agenda items that do not deserve time and priority. Instead, I'd like you to prioritize our finances, take non-essential funding out of the, of the bicycle program, out of the many study projects. We have over 15 study projects. We have over 15 study projects and we need to cut our study projects down so that we fund salaries for the people that really matter. And I'd like you to cut the top down salaries. I'm glad somebody from staff, I think Kendra it was, that spoke out, the city manager makes four times what the staff make. And we've added an assistant manager and an associate manager and now the economic development committee. We need to cut these roles at the top so that we fund the people that really matter. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And our final speaker is Gori Chala. Welcome, Gori.
Hello. I'm also here to speak on fair wages for city workers. I understand that it may be difficult to meet these changes, but I think that it is important that we have fair wages for all workers, but especially workers of our city who put, dedicate so much of their time to helping our city run and helping our citizens in our city have stable lives throughout, you know, disasters, including the COVID pandemic and the recent storms we had. So I would like to echo the request for fair wages and thank all city workers today. Thank you.
Thank you, Gori. And Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank everyone who spoke today. You know, and you take your time to speak to the council member. We really appreciate that. So now I'm going to close the oral communication and we are going to move to consent calendar, items number two to five. Do we have any consent calendar that's being pulled?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Moore pulled item number two.
Okay.
Which is the July 18 city council minutes.
Okay. So we are going to, if there's no other pool, let's open up for a public comment for consent calendar two. No, three, four, five. Two is being pulled. So we are open for a public comment for consent calendar three, four, and five.
So Mayor, I have one speaker card from Rhoda Frye for item number four.
Okay.
Rhoda?
Hi, good evening again. Had a couple of questions about the accounts payable. There, I was looking just through it quite quickly. And, and actually a couple, a couple of questions. One is about the Verizon bills. And I've seen this before where sometimes there's certain people's Verizon bills that are really much higher than others. For instance, this time, all the city council members had a Verizon bill, but Vice Mayor Mohans was huge compared to the other ones. And so why is that what happened? And the same is true for Mr. David Stillman's, a card was much higher than the others. I'd like to have some explanation about that because we care about how our dollars and cents gets spent in the city. That said, the other thing that surprised me, I was looking into how, how the city reimburses companies on this, this tax sharing agreement. And yes, this does have to do with AP, so hold on. So what happens is, for instance, if somebody, anybody in the state of California purchases an Apple product online, Cupertino gets the sales tax dollars as though that transaction had happened within Cupertino, not in LA, Los Altos, Los Gatos, whatever. It's as though it happened here. So Cupertino gets a benefit of that sale, but this tax, which is a buck out of every hundred spent. And then Cupertino remits 35 cents of that buck to Apple. There's a similar agreement with another company called Insight. So when we look at the accounts payable, about every quarter or so, we see a check that has gotten written to Apple or to Insight. And notice that there have been no payments to Apple for what we would normally have expected in Q1 and Q2 of the calendar year, not the fiscal year. So one question would be, why is Cupertino withholding that money that would otherwise go to Apple? But the other curious thing is, is there doesn't seem to be a matching invoice. And you know, usually when I think about, you know, when you pay people money, that there's some kind of invoice attached to it. So, so that's my question on AP. My second question first is about Verizon, why there's inconsistencies in charges on, for, for individuals. And the second is, why are there no matching invoices for the remitted tax payments to Insight and to Apple? Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And Mayor, that was the only speaker on this item.
Okay, so I will close the public comment for consent calendar three, four, and five. Do we want to email the residents' answers later?
Mayor, we'll follow up with Ms. Frye separately.
All right, thank you. So if, have a council discussion, three, four, five? If not, I would like to have a motion and a second, please.
Yeah, I move to, I move to approve the consent calendar other than item two.
Okay.
Items three, four, and five.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second. Any further discussions? If not, let's vote by light.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So we are moving consent calendar number two to the end of the agenda. Now we are going to public hearing. Do we need a rest? Not, no, we're okay? Okay, so there's no public hearing, so we are going to action item. Items number six and seven, it has a similar tone to it. So I would like to propose that we consider number six and seven at the same time, that we will hear number six staff presentation and give staff time to ask, give council member time to ask questions. And then we'll listen, we'll have staff present number seven and council have time to ask questions so that we can consider them at the same time. Is that okay with my colleagues?
I would rather step to separate the two items. I don't think they are relevant.
Okay, so. Okay, we, what about my other colleagues?
I have my hand raised, Mayor.
Can we have, maybe have a straw vote?
I raised my hand to speak.
Yes. I'm asking, do we want to combine it or are we okay separate?
I am not okay with it being combined.
Okay, and.
That's okay. I'm, I'm okay with not combining.
Okay, so we will look at number six first. Staff presentation, please. So the number six is enterprise leadership assessment audit final report. And may I have the staff presentation, please?
Hi, good evening, Mayor Way, council members. Christine Alfaro, Director of Administrative Services. And I will likely be turning the presentation over promptly over to Annie Rose Favreau with Moss Adams, who is the city's internal auditor for the presentation.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. I'm Annie Rose Favreau. I'm a senior manager with the Moss Adams team. And I have a brief presentation and I'm not sure the best way to make sure that it connects through so you can see it. There we go. Great, like magic. All right, well, this evening, I would like to share an overview of the enterprise leadership assessment that was performed as part of our work as the city's internal auditor. So I'm going to go through, briefly provide an overview of the purpose and scope, the methodology for this project, and then provide an overview of the observations and recommendations before opening it up for questions and discussion. In terms of the purpose of this work, this assessment was designed to evaluate the effectiveness of the city's management and governance collaboration. The goal was to ensure that all of the practices that are in place are well aligned with best practice and set everyone up for success moving forward. We wanted this to be constructive and really focused on how can the city move forward in some of the areas where there is continuing issues. So the scope of this work looked at a variety of different items, including things like council meeting procedures and resources, working relationships and collaboration, as well as training and onboarding. I do also want to highlight that while this assessment looked at city council as a whole, we also reviewed the committees and commissions as part of this work to understand how those governance groups, the processes that support those groups are also functioning. In terms of the methodology, the primary work for this project was conducted between March and June of this year. Our work is typically done in four phases where we start off with project initiation and then we move into fact finding. For this review, we conducted interviews with 23 members of city staff and council. We reviewed documents and conducted best practice research as well. Then we brought those items together, performed our analysis, created a draft report that was reviewed with the management team to validate facts. And then it was brought forward to the audit committee in July. The report itself, before I start going into the various observations, is divided into three sections. So the first observations that we'll be looking at are related to city council operations. The second set are related to commissions and committees, and the third set are related to staff members. So shifting into the observations and recommendations, the first area that we looked at was policies and procedures. And the city has established many policies that we would expect to see that are well aligned with best practice. So that is a very strong foundation to be starting from. But there are some opportunities that we noted to increase the effectiveness of some of your current policies. Specifically, we recommend continuing current efforts that are underway to update the city's governance policies with a focus on the ethics policy and the commission handbook. We would also recommend establishing a process to ensure that all policies are reviewed at least once every five years, just to make sure that they are up to date. And I do want to note that there are several items in here that are very closely connected to some of the discussion that will be taking place for agenda item number seven as well. So just want to flag that there will be discussion and direction around some of these overlapping topics once we get to that item two. So that is the case for this first item, as well as for this second, which is focused on meeting cadence and processes. This is another area where positive progress is already being made while we were performing this assessment, the adoption of the city council procedure manual. We received a lot of good feedback saying, yes, we're headed in the right direction. This is setting up all involved for success, but we want to continue focusing in this area to make sure that these city council meetings are as productive as possible. So the recommendation here again is really to continue the work that is happening here and making sure that everyone fully is aware of those procedures and are held accountable to fulfilling them. The third item looks at collaboration and relationships. So we know that there has been challenge in this area and the recommendations here are very much aligned with some of the other ongoing work that is happening in this area. Focusing on many of the recommendations from the 2023 internal review, including really focusing on how can those one-on-one meetings be effectively used as prep for having effective and strong council meetings? Looking at the municipal code guidelines, we have a recommendation around making sure that there's a consistent practical criteria to determine when information requests might require excessive staff time in order to complete, to make sure that that code guideline can be applied consistently. And then finally, thinking about when we're speaking of roles and responsibilities, how can we ensure that those are well defined and clarified for all involved through things like governance trainings and retreats as well? The fourth item here is related to that, looking at onboarding and training. This is another area where recently the onboarding and orientation process has been updated and we received some positive feedback that that has been a step in the right direction, but that it could be further strengthened specifically by adding items to do with roles, responsibilities, but also just practical application of guidelines so that those trainings are kind of taken out of the theoretical and brought more down into the practical. Our fifth area was looking at ethics and compliance. And the city is already performing many of the best practice elements that we would expect to see in a comprehensive ethics program. But there was one gap that we noticed in terms of compliance enforcement in relation to Form 700 disclosures. So our recommendation is just about closing that gap. The fifth area was related to strategic direction. So as you all know, every governing body setting the strategic direction is a major piece of what you all do here. And the work plan, the two-year work plan is again, a good step in the right direction to prioritize annual initiatives. However, we would recommend that the city consider developing a longer range plan, like a five-year strategic plan, to help ensure long-range strategy, but also continuity as there are shifts in leadership over time as well. We would recommend continuing the efforts that are currently underway to really refine the annual work program prioritization process. And then finally, we have some recommendations related to how this group is well equipped to track the progress toward the strategic goals over time and some items that could be added there to make sure that you all have the information that you need to do that effectively. Number seven was in relation to community engagement. This is another item that I'm imagining will come up in agenda item seven as well. But this is looking at the fact that you have a very active, vocal and engaged community, which is absolutely fantastic. Within that space, it's important to make sure that there's a wide range of opportunities for people to be providing feedback. In many ways, the city has established excellent avenues for community engagement and we noted some additional opportunities to do that. First and foremost is just making sure that there's good alignment before the city integrates or begins major initiatives so that there's good alignment between expectations of city council in terms of what community engagement will look like and how that is carried out by staff and staff capacity for that. The second recommendation is to continue current efforts to establish a statistically significant representative community survey so that you can ground decision-making and really have that broad understanding of across our community, in particular, some of the folks that we might not hear from always, are there, you know, general consensus around certain topics or really, really strong division on different topics as well. And the last recommendation is around providing media and crisis communication, which is considered a best practice in this area. So then shifting gears into the commission and committee work that we reviewed, the first thing we looked at was the actual structure, number, focus, and goals of the commissions and committees that are in place. You have many commissions and committees here, which is the really critical part of local government so that you can have that as both an engagement tool, but also really relying on the expertise of the community members that participate in those groups. There are some opportunities to increase the effectiveness of these groups and ensure that everyone's time is being really well used as they are participating in these groups as well. Our first recommendation here is related to establishing a charter for each group so that it's very clear what are the roles and responsibilities of those group members, in particular, because many of your groups are advisory in nature. The second recommendation is around reviewing the governance groups themselves. We identified some options to potentially bring together some of those groups, again, with the focus of knowing it's a significant allocation of resources, both in terms of the group members and the staff that support these groups. So ensuring that they are as streamlined as possible while also getting what you need from these groups in terms of their advisory capacity. And then the last piece is just looking at the naming convention. Right now, some of the groups are called committees, some are called commissions. And so that is an opportunity to revisit and ensure that there's consistency there. The ninth area was looking at the member selection process. Right now, there are several groups that could potentially benefit from adding some baseline qualification criteria for those groups. So we've noted several areas. That's certainly not true for all groups or even most groups, but several of the groups could benefit from that, and we have noted that in the report as well. Ten, when we were looking at the operations, thinking through things like onboarding, meeting procedures, work plans, those areas. What we noted is that that is fairly inconsistent between different groups. And so we have recommendations around increasing the consistency there, making sure that there is a standardized onboarding and training process so that everyone is set up with similar background before coming into these roles. Clarifying the process and expectations for if you don't need to hold a meeting, how do we go about canceling the meeting? Again, to respect everyone's time. And then finally, thinking about, or at least considering, asking each group to adopt an annual work plan so that they can be focusing on what do we want to accomplish within this next year within our roles in the particular groups as well. Finally, shifting into our last two observations, these are more focused towards staff members. But the first thing that we wanted to note is that it requires really significant investment of staff time to support these groups. And so we want to make sure again, that that staff time is being used as effectively as possible. We know that these groups are incredibly important and we want to make sure that the processes are as efficient as can be. Some of the recommendations here are just around reviewing to ensure that there's consistency and clarity about who needs to attend these meetings, whether it's the staff liaison, the department director, or both. And then finally, providing training to staff liaisons, again, so that they have a very consistent baseline knowledge around what is expected of them in these roles. And our final piece is on communication and change management. This is a general note. We know that the organization has gone through a pretty extreme period of flux and change in the last several years. So as shifts are being made, especially in relation to some of these governance groups, thinking about how can we internally as a management team focus on communication and change management? focus on communication and change management to ensure that staff are brought along on those decisions and changes as well. So with that, I will close out. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your report, very detailed. And I'd like to open up for questions from council. We have five minutes to ask questions. If, Councilmember Chow, please.
Questioning, so was any commission members interviewed? And how about any residents who we actually serve? How they observe as our effectiveness? Thank you.
Thank you for your question. So we did not interview any commission member or residents as part of the scope of this work. We did interview staff members that support the individual commissions and committees to get their understanding of current processes. But because the focus was really on those internal processes, it was restricted to staff and city council.
Councilmember, I don't see any lights coming up, so if, Councilmember Frue.
So out of these 12 recommendations or other observations, are there any that you think would be specifically very high priority? Like if you had to rank them, is there a way that you would choose to do so?
Great question. Let me take a look here. We tried to focus our observations, obviously, on the most critical areas. So I will say, I do think that all the areas are important. Some of the areas, though, there is current work already happening, many of these areas actually. And so I would say focusing on completing the current work that is in progress would be an excellent start for this. And then coming back and picking up some of the newer additional pieces.
Got it. And then with respect to observations, one and two, and their related recommendations, especially two, you know, continue current efforts to implement the City Council Procedures Manual and hold meeting participants accountable. Are there any more specific recommendations that you would make there? It's a little broad.
Yes, absolutely. And we do go into some more detail in the report itself. But I think the main piece that we wanted to highlight there is that you have what you need in the procedure doctrine in general. Most of what you need is in there already. So now it's a matter of making sure that everybody's aligned, bought into those, and have a really strong understanding of how to apply those procedures and abide by them on a regular basis.
Okay. And then, did you have any specific recommendations with regard to Item 3B?
Yeah, so this is one in relation to, within your municipal code, you have the guideline that says essentially if there's going to be significant staff time that is needed for this, how do we determine that? And there are some additional guidelines within the municipal code that kind of bring down one level of specificity. The recommendation here is really around saying, what are some of the internal processes or even sort of decision tree that we would want to go through as a management team to determine that? So for example, an initial request might take 10 minutes to complete. So you say, yes, we're going to respond to this, respond away. And then it turns out that there might be follow-up information, or it turns out that there's one additional piece that we didn't realize before that then might take and start eating into that time, essentially. And so we have seen some cities develop a simple decision-making tree that says, at this point in the process, that's when we're going to cut it off in alignment with the municipal code. Obviously, it falls under that umbrella. But that way, it can make it a little bit easier internally as that decision is being made on each request so that that can be applied as consistently as possible.
Is there a degree of formalization of that decision tree that you would recommend?
No, I would recommend keeping it as an informal tool and really have it be an internal tool just to speed up the efficiency of that decision-making process. And again, have it just be that internal check for consistency.
Got it. And then taking it sort of to the next logical step, which is if you do have something that might be instead of a work program item, are you familiar at all with San Jose's Early Consideration Response Form? No? Okay, all right, I'll take that up with staff afterward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mohan?
Thank you for the presentation. We, along with Councilmember Frue, we had the opportunity to look at this a few weeks ago as part of the Audit Committee proceedings. I had a specific question about the strategic direction portion of your report. It's probably based on best practices from other jurisdictions. How does it actually work? We sort of live in a time when there's constant change, and to even plan one year ahead is a challenge in itself. So does it even make sense? I know it's a good thing to think strategically, but how does it work? And what would be your recommendation to put that into practice in practical terms?
Absolutely. And you are not alone on that at all in terms of recognizing that things are coming up every year, things are coming up every month that might need to be taken into consideration. Typically, what we see this done as is you might set a three-to-five-year strategic plan, where you say, here are the major goals, here are the major initiatives that we wish to accomplish during that time. But it's not a promise. It's not saying we absolutely are going to do all of these things. It's saying, this is where we are hoping to go, this is where we would like to aim as a city. Then on an annual basis, typically what this looks like is the management team will get together and select from the strategic plan, here are the items that we think would make sense to move forward this year. They would bring that to city council, you all would weigh in on that set priorities for the year, and do that in advance of your budgeting cycle so that those can be brought in and budgeted for. In that way, you can also identify at that time if there's any major strategic initiatives that should be added to the list, essentially, so you can be responding to emergent needs while still kind of keeping your eye on some of those most critical long-term goals as well.
Do most cities do this?
Many cities do this, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. If there are no questions from the council, I'd like to open up a public comment, please.
Yes, Mayor, I have three speaker cards for speaking comments in Community Hall, and I see one hand on Zoom. Jennifer Griffin, followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren. And one more by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. I think the Moss Adams, I believe, has done a thorough job. I have worked in government situations at jobs, and I worked at Laurel Space Systems, which held government and federal contracts and international. So I'm used to audits and audit trains, et cetera, going on. I think that it's good that Cupertino had the audit happen, but I will tell you that having come here for 23 years, since 2001, when we annexed, and five years previously at the Board of Supervisors in Santa Clara County when we had Mr. Sidmidian and Mr. Bell as both Board of Supervisors for my neighborhood of Rancho Renconada, I have seen a lot of things happen. And I find it hard to believe that everyone in the Board of Supervisors in the last 23 years in Cupertino have been doing it wrong. I think that it's good to have audits, it's good to take recommendations, but I can't believe that everything that we have done for the last 30 years has been inadequate or wrong. I mean, there are a lot of things that have happened in these chambers. We did all of the Apple stuff. There was a lot of upheaval in 2010. We never had particular problems with city council members. This is the first year that has been, it appears, that there are some problems. And I don't blame the other two. I think that we're going to have to work through this. I also, right now, we've eliminated the Environmental Review Committee, the Design Review Committee, and the Legislative Review Committee. We have had no Planning Commission meeting for the last three months. And now I understand that the Park and Rec is not being televised. We have no committees left. What have we got? Bike and Ped and the Fine Arts Committee and the Library Committee? I mean, we have like three or four committees left. So I think these, Moss Adams has worked very diligently, but we have no committees left. There's nothing, maybe we don't need staff members to run those committees. But I'll tell you, last year, we were full and loaded and running. And to me, we participated in everything. It was like being at the university. I had so much that I got out of my last year in Cupertino. The last, this, the last nine months has been like being in nursery school, I swear to God. And I have a bachelor's degree in biochemistry, and I have taken master's level classes in biochemistry.
Thank you, Jennifer.
It's like nursery school. Thank you.
Peggy Griffin, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, councilmembers and staff. I believe in audits. I think they can be very helpful in moving in the right direction and identifying problems, particularly in the finance area. I also agree in training. And I think that top of the list, Rosenberg's Rules and Brown Act in detail, cover many aspects of it. And in particular, the minute they're elected, the minute, don't wait till they've been served and sat on the dais for a month before the first meeting, or they don't show up. Work plans for commissions, I'm disappointed that the commissioners were not interviewed because there are issues with our commissions. Their members are motivated, they're energized, they want to participate. And on planning, they want to handle the balcony issues, the tree, what do you call it, landscape mitigations. These are things that will impact us as density grows. And they're not, the meeting's not even happening for them to do that. Also, when you aren't, I believe in a work plan for the commissions, but I think the commissioners should have a say on it. It should not be dictated by staff. It should be a cooperative list. And also, cancellation of commissioning meetings, commissioner meetings should be decided cooperatively, not just dictated down. Anyway, thank you. I hope you think about that.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So I'll start with saying that in recent months, I've observed, and I do agree with everything that Peggy mentioned, but I've observed that several important decisions and items that were labeled as commitments from this staff and council are not being followed through on. I feel like we're stuck in the mud, and what really matters is not happening. And it's a problem. And the lack of transparency, which everyone says they want to have, that is occurring and continues to get worse, makes this only worse because people are waiting to hear about things they already know are supposed to be an issue, and it stalls out. So there's, we are in a, stuck in a mud. It's like being at Burning Man last weekend, I would assume. So, the city council has adopted a list of recommendations from one of the several paid-for consultants they have had. One example that I want to highlight is the city council should continue to use the city work program as a way to implement council's goals, and the city should rely on the work program to focus resources and determine staffing needs. I don't see that really happening, and if it's happening, it's not transparent. And the public is not being allowed to have input. And as said before, commissioners or committees are not even allowed to have input because their meetings are canceled. They can have study sessions if they don't have a true agenda. And I know that takes staff time, but it's important. These people have engaged in the city to help, and they're not being able to do so. There's just this spinning wheel of drama that's going on for almost nine months that is not serving the city well at all. We live in an increasingly nasty world, right down to our own city. It feels as though silencing those at the top of the city's org chart, which is the residents, and compartmentalized governing is the new transparency. I'm not in favor of that. It seems that serial punishment and individual investigation is a new working together. I disagree. But it's what's happening, it's what the public is seeing. Questions aren't answered. If they're answered, they're vague, and they aren't really answers, and you can't get a real answer. We haven't even had reviews from our top two staff members, which makes me wonder, as I've said previously. It's a great loss to lose a community who's interested and was all fired up eight years ago to make things better when there's a changing of attitude. And I'm not blaming one thing or another.
Lisa, that is your time.
But it needs to stop.
Next, we have Rhoda Frye. Welcome, Rhoda.
Hi, thank you for your report. And it's a great opportunity that you're here. I hope that you can comment on the sudden non-televising of our Parks and Rec Commission. I'm really hoping that the city council can work with staff to figure out a way to restore televising these important meetings. They will become more important moving on because we're going to be growing our population. We want to make sure that we have enough land for parks and what we do with our parks. And I just think it's a terrible thing and reduces the transparency. And maybe we could have some kind of a video light. It doesn't have to be as good as the video that we do for city council or planning, but let's, please, restore it. And I really want an explanation as to how it got eliminated in the first place. We really do want to encourage public engagement and transparency. We hear transparency over and over again. And it makes me sad to see what, just repeat what my predecessors have said, to see the way things are going. And I'd also like to remind the council and staff about the Bagley Keen Open Meeting Act. That meetings of public bodies and writings of public officials and agencies shall be open to public scrutiny. But if you take that opportunity away, we don't have the opportunity to engage publicly. And that is why I sincerely thank the council for keeping Items Six and Seven on this agenda separate. If they had been heard together, it would have been confusing. And if they'd been heard together, that means that it would reduce the opportunity for public engagement. And isn't that what we're here for? So that's what I have to say. Sorry for being a little disorganized. But anyway, I'm hoping you can make some suggestions about how we can make Parks and Rec Commission work for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And we will now move to Zoom. We have two hands raised, Sam R. and Jennifer Sheeran. Welcome, Sam.
Good evening, City Council. I have to wonder, we're seeing the council meet after more than a month, and what are the priorities that this set of agenda items show up as the priority for the council? How does the work program set priorities that of all the things you could be talking about, we could have been talking about finances, we could have been talking about funding city staff, we could have been talking about the housing element, we could have been talking about the sign ordinance, but yet here we are talking about an audit report, which is very well-written and very well-presented by Christina, kudos to Christina for a well-presented report. However, you have to question when this report addresses certain aspects but leaves other things out. I'd like to understand how many study projects are city staff involved in right now and what are efficiencies that could be achieved by eliminating study project? I'd like to understand how many working groups are being run by staff right now that are addendums to committees and commissions, particularly in the area of bike and ped. We spend an inordinate amount of time on the bicycle agenda in Cupertino. on the bicycle agenda in Cupertino. And I'd like to know how much time staff spend on dollar and dogs off leash? When a report is ominously silent about things you could be cutting that you don't, it begs the matter of whether trust exists. When residents are left out of an audit report from both being interviewed and participating, it begs the question of whether we should run our own audit report. Would you like for residents to have our own recommendations and findings and come back to you with that? We can certainly do so. Unfortunately, nine months of the term of Mayor Hung Wei has been spent on non-essential items like this. And the next agenda will probably be the same. I implore you not to cut the team commission. The team commission is the first taste of civic engagement and civic participation. We have seen a continued onslaught of cuts in youth and teen and kids' activities under this council. And here is another one recommending the team commission perhaps be cut. The team commission is where people learn to engage in the civic process. I implore you not to cut any of that. And the Housing and Planning Commission need to stay separate, and we need to restore these meetings on the cadence of their required topic.
Thank you, Sam. That is your time. Next, we have Jennifer Sheeran. Welcome, Jennifer.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Good evening, city council members and Mayor Wei. I wasn't intending to speak on this topic tonight. I am Jennifer Sheeran, and I'm here tonight only speaking as myself. Thank you for this assessment. I want to say thank you. Without taking an assessment, we can't determine how well we're doing. It's clear that our city had a lot of issues in how it was run before this year. Meetings lasted until all hours of the night. For example, I personally was at a meeting in 2018 that lasted until 4:00 a.m. That means staff was there until 4:00 a.m. following that meeting. We all have heard about documented abuses of our city's procedures and municipal code. I'm not going to go into that. A lot of that has improved with our new council and our new procedures. No one is being silenced. Everyone has the same amount of time to speak as before. It can be frustrating when council members that you supported are no longer in office. This doesn't mean that anyone is being treated other than respectfully. The council meeting is a business meeting for the council to set direction for the city to do business. I'm glad that we're moving in that direction. Thank you for doing that and for all the changes that you have made. Now, everyone in the city, including our staff, and not just a handful of residents, have the opportunity to speak. It's about 8:15 p.m. right now. And the nice part about it is we're all still awake to give meaningful input. So I really appreciate this, and thank you for all you do.
Thank you, Jennifer. And Mayor, that was our final speaker that had their hand raised in the nine minutes.
All right. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I want to thank all the residents and attendees who speak. Thank you for speaking up your mind. And then I want to bring back to the council for council input. I think this item is to accept the Enterprise Leadership Assessment Audit Final Report. To receive it, I would bring back to council for five minutes discussion or, you know, what do you believe you want to say? Councilmember Chow?
Actually, I have more questions. So I think, I understand that for this internal audit, we don't interview commissioners or residents. However, as a city government funded by taxpayer dollars, our goal is to serve the residents. So I would like to understand what kind of assessment is there that would actually evaluate the effectiveness of the city serving the residents, getting their feedback? Because it's very easy to conduct a meeting, be very happy with how it's conducted because we think we got everything we want done. But the residents might feel totally left out. The commissioners probably feel they didn't get their input in putting, setting the agenda. But if we interview only one side of the table, that doesn't give us a full picture. So I wonder what assessment is there that actually gives us, to ensure us that we are actually doing what we are here to do, which is to serve the people?
It just took a professional. Thank you. Great question. Thank you. So the note that we have about the representative community survey, I think, really speaks to the need that you're speaking to there. That would be an excellent tool to gather annual feedback from a broad array of your community members about their perception of what is the direction of current city government? Do we feel like it's headed in a positive direction, a negative direction? Being able to provide feedback on exactly the topics that you're talking about. So that is an excellent tool that you could use and implement, and I believe is in progress of being implemented to help fill in some of those questions.
That really doesn't answer my question because we are talking about effectiveness of the city council meeting, commission meeting, and the other Parks and Rec programs, for example. How do we evaluate the effectiveness of these programs? Community survey might help us with a low-term strategic plan. But I feel that this, yeah, so how do we, is there some kind of assessment that you can recommend?
Well, and this might not be fully answering your question, but to provide a little bit more context, in terms of when we were looking at the effectiveness of meetings, some of the things that we were looking at were things like, what is the average length of the meeting? How effectively are you able to move through topics and agenda items? So you'll see in the report that we call out some of the specific criteria that we're using to determine and to evaluate effectiveness. And while community input was not necessarily part of the criteria that were used for that, it is well-aligned with best practice in terms of what we would consider to see at the municipal level for things like community meetings and the collaboration of this team.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Moore, please.
Thank you, and thank you for the report. I was wondering about, there is a table which shows hours spent by the liaison for the Economic Development Committee, and that committee was abolished. So we had had interviews and a selection process, and then they were abolished. And what I believe is in their place is the city manager has a working group. And did you have any interviews with regards to how often the working group met? What their kind of work product and direction is for that? Because it's been a number of months since that happened. So that's my first question. And then with regards to the Sister Cities Committee, did you find what the assignment actually entails? And how often the committee members who were assigned to that committee would meet? And what their purpose was? And if not, then I'd like to hear a little bit more about that. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So to clarify, the tables that have the breakdown of the staff hours, those are pulled from a previous staff report. So all those numbers were gathered previously, which is why they speak to some of the commissions and committees that were eliminated subsequent to that. So we included them in this report mainly to illustrate the level of investment that is needed for a lot of these groups. But it doesn't, it is not a full documentation of the current staff time that is spent on the current groups because it does take into account some of those additional groups that have since that time been reduced or eliminated. So that's one piece there. As I mentioned, we did not speak with any of the commissioner or committee members, so I can't speak to any of their experiences there.
Through the mayor, do you have any information about the manager's working group for economic development? Or is that something that could be researched and could be brought back to us so we could hear what the progress is with that team is? Thank you.
The manager's working group was outside of the scope of this audit, it was just looking specifically at committees and commissions, so I'll defer to city manager Wu.
Sure. Through the mayor, we can follow up with councilmember Moore offline. Member Moore, do you have more questions? More? You have two minutes?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. If, I like to ask a couple of questions. So in your opinion, the way you assess this tool, are you using the standard best practice to assess if another city asks you to do the same thing, this is what you would do?
Yes. So this is a standard process that we've set up within Moss Adams, based on our experience working with other cities as well as standard industry best practice. So this is a general framework that we use when we do this type of governance assessment.
Okay, thank you. So when I look at it, your recommendations comes in different categories. I think councilmember Frum asked you, you know, which one do you think are the most important ones? And you said concentrate on the ones we have already started and finish that. In that case, I think that's a good recommendation. I want to follow up with councilmember Chow's. Why are we not getting public engaged or getting commissioner engaged? So in your opinion, as a profession, professional who knows what to do, what's the theory of in this particular assessment not to include public or commissioners?
So when we put together a scope for this, you can set it up in a couple of different ways for this type of project. And sometimes the goal is to really understand, what is the community perception of these groups? What do we need to be shifting in terms of our internal operation to ensure that we're meeting community needs? That would be one particular type of assessment. This particular assessment was really focused on, what are internal processes? And do we need to make any changes or shifts to those to make those internal processes as efficient and productive as possible? So the scope and the focus of this assessment is just a little bit different. If we had been accomplishing that first item, that would have absolutely been critical to include community input as a critical piece of the fact-finding for that. But because the scope of this was really restricted to those internal processes, it is not typical to include resident or community feedback as part of this type of process.
Okay, thank you. I have no further discussion questions. Councilmember Frum?
Just a quick follow-up on my earlier question about observation and recommendation number two. There is a subsection there with a recommendation on effective meeting facilitation, specifically at the end where it says, "Encourage respectful and constructive dialogue among council members and establish clear rules and protocols for productive meetings." Are there specific rules and protocols that you think we would benefit from?
Yes. So I do think that the vast majority of what you need, as I said, is in the procedures manual. So I believe that that is covering 99% of what you need. And I think the 1% remaining is going to be up to this group to come back, review that, say, is it meeting our needs as a team? But in terms of alignment with best practice, that is, I would say that is covering what we would expect to see it cover there.
The reason I bring it up is that two items from now, we will be addressing exactly that. So I'm curious as to whether you have anything concrete that you would offer.
I don't at this time. I do, as I said, when we performed our review in alignment with best practice, you have the elements that you need there. That being said, every group is unique. And so I think at this point, it's also about making sure that it's well-tailored to meet your needs as a team.
Thank you, councilmember Frum. Any more questions? I want to follow up with one question from the comment of one of the speakers. This whole assessment actually, to me, feels like we are concentrating on how can we use best practice to do business? Open up, listen to public comments, but still move the business of the city council forward so that we can complete the council's task of doing business? Is that a good description of this assessment?
I think it absolutely encompasses a really critical part of this, which is, we want to make sure that you all have the tools that you need to do your business really effectively. I think a piece of that is community engagement, for sure. But the vast majority of what we were looking at here actually does not necessarily touch on community engagement. So that's just one item here. But I do think it's absolutely fair to say that the purpose of this work is to provide a constructive set of recommendations to be able to move forward in your work together. And one element of that is making sure that the community engagement processes are open and productive for everybody.
Also, a comment I want to make is, I feel that this gives us, all five of us and the public be on the same page, following the same precision so we can all understand what we, we have time to express our opinions, we have time to share, we have time to discuss, time to ask questions, and time to make decisions together. I feel that it gives us a good framework, how we can move forward to have best practice and understand each other's framework of how we move together. Okay, that's, okay, I'm done with my comment. If Vice Mayor Mohan?
Thank you, mayor. I wanted to follow up on Mayor Wei's comments a second ago. The way I perceive this is, this is a status of how city government, Cupertino city government is functioning at this point in time. And it's an assessment of how things stand are, how things stand at this time. So what, in your opinion, would be the next steps? How do we, what is the follow-up mechanism for this?
I can imagine that there's a couple of different pieces going on here because there is quite a bit of current or in-progress work that's already happening. And so obviously, we would not want to get in the way of any of those items. But for any items that would be new items of business, that is certainly something that I think would be up for discussion here in terms of which of those items you would like to move forward with. Most of these items are things that fall within the sphere of city council. There are obviously a few that fall really at the management level, so that would be ideally managed there. But for most of these, I think that that would be up to this group to determine what you would like to move forward with and implement.
Okay. Question for maybe the city manager and staff. What in your opinion, how would we proceed from this point?
Sure.
Did you mind if I take that? So, I mean, there are some recommendations presented with the next item, and as, you know, some recommendations that the city attorney's office has made, as well as some additional points for discussion that we are directing council to, several of which flow out of the Moss Adams report that you're hearing. So I think I would refer you to that. But of course, if there are other things that council wants to prioritize, that's the purpose of this discussion this evening.
And through the mayor, if I may, I think, just want to reemphasize the action before you tonight. Right now, for this item is to receive the report. And the recommendations identified in the report could be further elaborated by the city attorney's office in a moment or so.
Thank you. Councilmember Chow, you have one minute and 30 seconds.
Okay, yeah. So I think an organization often has conflicting goals. For example, the city staff might want things to be more effective and things are determined quickly. But the public wants deliberation to be done in public, and then they want us to take time to listen to their input and then take the time to deliberate. And as a result, an effective meeting may not serve the goals of the residents. And for the record, I think for the last two years, at least, when Mayor Paul was conducting the meeting, we rarely go over midnight. And we, he set time limit, but does allow us time to deliberate. So I wonder, as an expert, when there are conflicting goals in an organization, which is normal, and we want that, how do we ensure that we find a compromise that achieve everyone's purpose? So we serve the residents and while conducting a good city government?
I think the key there is making sure that everyone's on the same page and well-aligned and you have consistent expectations. So that's where your procedures really come into play because they provide you a framework so that everyone is aware, here's the moments for public input, here's how we're going to take that into account, here's how we move forward with the discussion. So I think that the framework and procedures are really excellent tool to start you on that path. to start you on that path to balance those, those competing needs as well.
So, thank you. If there are no more comments, we can move to number seven. The reason why I was going to combine it because I think the actions is in number seven. So right now, we have finished number six, unless someone has, still have some comments? Do we need to take a break? Okay, so let's take a five-minute break, and we can come back to number seven.